I just want to let everybody know that we have a procedural tax budget hearing to do first. It'll be really quick, then we'll get into the trustee meeting. Just wanted to confuse you about what we're going to be doing. Like, are we here for the right meeting? Just real quick procedural meeting, then we'll get into the trustee meeting.
For the tax budget meeting, right?
Okay, good evening. Today is Tuesday, July 11th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. I now call the Fairfield Township Board of Trustees' Public Hearing for the 2024 Tax Budget to Order. Ms. Schultz, you call the role, please.
Trustee Birding.
Present.
Trustee Harkemaier, here.
Trustee McAdie, here.
Will you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on the tax budget?
So moved.
Second. Okay, Ms. Schultz, you call the role, please.
Trustee Harkemaier, here.
Trustee McAdie.
Here.
Trustee Birding.
Here.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, 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 okay.
Okay, Ms. Schultz, discussion?
I did the tax budget hearing, or tax budget for 2024, similar to prior years. The carryover balance is 13 million. Property tax revenue approximately is 10,824,000. Other sources of income, 4,794,000. I'm sorry. Yeah, 4,794,000. For a total estimated revenues allowed to spend is 28,618,000. Appropriations is 18,326,000. That does include contingencies, which we have done in the past. And that leaves our fund balance at the end of 2024, 10,292,000. I did it the same as every other year. I estimated property tax based on what we got this year, estimated other revenues based on what we got this year, and then did appropriations based on what we've spent this is year-to-date through May 31st, annualized. Seem by having questions?
Questions or comments from the board?
There's copies in the back if anyone might like to see it.
Basically, it's just an estimate of what our revenue is going to be for next year and what we expect to spend.
No big surprises, so.
No.
Any other questions or comments, the board?
Can I actually play with the public hearing?
Second. Ms. Schultz, you call the role.
Trustee McAdie.
Yes.
Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier, yes.
And that motion passes, and we adjourn the public hearing for the tax budget of 2024 at 7:03 PM. Okay, now we move into the regular agenda. So I call the Fairfield Township Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting for Tuesday, July 11th, 2023 to order. Ms. Schultz, you call the role, please.
Trustee Birding.
Present.
Trustee Harkemaier, here.
Trustee McAdie, here.
Okay, our first presentation is a resolution. Can we have that resolution, please?
Resolution. Resolution 2399, approving the promotion of Police Officer Ryan C. Roach to Sergeant's position effective immediately.
I move to adopt Resolution 23-99.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Ms. Schultz, you call the role, please.
Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier, yes.
Trustee McAdie.
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted. Chief Shabali?
Trustees, Mrs. Londerhar, good evening to Officer Roach's family and friends. I'm Bob Shabali, Chief of Police of the Fairfield Township Police Department. Welcome to tonight's promotional ceremony portion of the board meeting. Today is a great day as we have one of our own, Officer Ryan Roach, being promoted to the rank of Sergeant. Before I proceed, I want to introduce members of our staff present tonight. Sergeant Brandon McCroskey. I'll go quickly because we have a lot of folks here tonight. Sergeant John Vanderite. Sergeant Matt Miller is not here. He is in training. Captain Lanier is out of town. He is the Assistant Chief. Also present, Officer Trent Smith, raise your hand. Officer Mitch Williams. Officer Corey Stevens. Detective Louis Dietrich. Officer Scott Singleton. Officer Adam Green, just knocked in. Officer Tess Flynn. Officer Cameron Wood. Officer Juan Clatus. Officer Richard Coy. And Officer David Caldwell. Did I miss anybody? All right. Officer Roach, please come forward. Right here. Officer Roach has provided me with his very impressive bio, which I will read. Officer Ryan Roach is a Fairfield Township resident and local business owner. Ryan resides with his wife Amanda, who is a Hamilton police officer, and his stepdaughter Caroline. From an early age, Ryan developed a passion for police work and helping others. As a kid, he often went to work with his father, who retired as a lieutenant with Butler County Sheriff's Office. This enabled Ryan to learn many valuable lessons that he has been able to use throughout his own law enforcement career. Following graduation from Edgewood High School, Ryan decided to further his education by enrolling at Miami University. As a result, he graduated magna cum laude with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. During his time at Miami University, Ryan was awarded numerous scholarships and academic awards in criminal justice and black world studies. In 2012, Ryan attended Butler Tech Police Academy, and upon graduation, he was honored to be named Outstanding Cadet and Top Shot for his academy class. For eight and a half years, Ryan had the privilege of serving the community of Clear Creek Township in Warren County as a police officer. Early in his law enforcement career, Ryan was assigned to the Warren County Tactical Response Team, also known as SWAT, as an entry team member and sniper. At the time, he was the youngest officer in team history to be selected to join this specialized unit. During this time, Ryan also served as a field training officer for patrol and SWAT officers. In 2021, Ryan was hired as the first lateral police officer in Fairfield Township Police Department's history. Ryan currently serves as the offering charge for the midnight shift, is a field training officer, and is often called upon to perform tasks as an evidence technician. Outside of his patrol duties, Ryan serves as a departmental instructor in areas such as firearms, subject control, and various use of force topics. Ryan is a quartermaster for the police department and serves as a unit representative for the Patrol Officers Bargaining Unit. Early in Ryan's law enforcement career, he grew a passion for developing fellow officers, and he obtained numerous instructor-level certification in topics related to police use of force. As a result, Ryan has had the opportunity to teach police officers from around the country. Earlier this year, Ryan had the honor of being invited to instruct at the Ohio Tactical Officer Association Annual Training Conference. For those who don't know, this is the largest tactical officers conference in the United States. Ryan is excited to hit the ground running as a sergeant and looks forward to working alongside his fellow officers in partnership with the community in the relentless pursuit of making Fairfield Township a safe place to visit, raise a family, and grow business. It is important to note that Ryan scored first in the written test, which is very difficult, first in the assessment exercise, and did very well in the chief's interview. At this time, the trustees who have voted already, Mr. Birding will swear you in. His dad, Steve, will pin his badge on him. Afterwards, he will introduce other members of his family and friends and will provide a statement.
Okay, would you raise your hand? Repeat after me. Hi, state your name.
I, Ryan Roach.
Do some, sir.
Do some, sir.
That I will serve my department.
That I will serve my department.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
Serve and protect the citizens of Fairfield Township.
Serve and protect the citizens of Fairfield Township.
With compassion.
With compassion.
Courage and integrity.
Courage and integrity.
And uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the rules and regulations.
And the rules and regulations.
Of the Fairfield Township Police Department.
Of the Fairfield Township Police Department.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Do the duties.
Do the duties.
A police sergeant.
A police sergeant.
For the Fairfield Township.
For the Fairfield Township.
In Butler County.
In Butler County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During my continuance and set office.
During my continuance and set office.
Congratulations.
If you want to give a little speech here, introduce your family, friends, sure, go ahead.
Okay. First, I just want to thank my wife, Amanda, my stepdaughter Caroline, for being here and helping me do all this. Also, my family, I have my dad, Steve, my mom over there, Sean, my stepfather, Tom, my sister, Andrea, and Melvin, my grandpa over there. I think it's the only family I haven't missed. Also, I'd like to thank friends and family that came here tonight. I know there's some members of my gym that made it over here as well, and also members of our department. Thank you for being here for me, and I want to be there for you guys, obviously, too. And also, thanks to trustees for voting yes. That would have been a bummer. But I'm just thankful to be here, and I would continue with the reading department and community. So thank you, and thanks, Chief, for having me.
We will have refreshments and light snacks for the family and friends after the ceremony, which is now at the fire department next door, so you do not have to stay for the rest of the meeting. Thank you. I apologize for the photos first before we do that, so if Ryan, you and your family and the trustees want to go towards the flag. I don't think he's listening. The family can also get photographs with him.
Okay, like the chief said, there will be repressions being served now at the fire station. If you're here to celebrate with Sergeant Roach, feel free to leave now and join him and celebrate his successes. If you're here to see the rest of the meeting, stay around. Got a lot of things to discuss. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the Veterans Memorial Committee update. Dr. Fred Valaris.
Well, good evening. It's not 94 degrees out with, you know, humidity skyscraping, but I think we all survived that day in many ways. It was a grand day, and probably will be memorable for more than the heat, you know. We made a bigger accomplishment, I mean, the crowd for the dedication on June 3rd. We've had various estimates go to as high as 300 people, and I don't know if there's many events in the township that have gotten anywhere close to that number of people. Of course, they wanted to see their plaques up on the wall was a big incentive for being here, but just to be part of the program. And I do want to mention, just in passing, I'll mention one person's comment. If you know Mayor Mitch Rotis of the city of Fairfield, you know that Mitch can kind of spread the hubris a bit. But anyway, he was so impressed, he said this to me after the program, and he was literally taking notes. He had never seen such an impressive Memorial Day program as there had been that day. He was taking notes for Fairfield and what the city needed to do or consider for future self. Anyway, so one thing I wanted to do is to bring members of our committee here. You've seen some of them, most of the time they're in the background, but I want just to give them a short snippet of what they contributed, not just what I did, okay? So we'll go with, how about we go with Ralph, you go first, and everybody line up behind Ralph, okay? So I'll let them just introduce themselves and what role they've been taking.
Good evening, Ralph Tobrigan. My duties included site civil design, consultant selection and oversight, bidding, contract selection and oversight, and plaque coordination and installation. Thank you.
And of course, Ralph was the chair of the Parks Committee that helped recommend the location for the memorial when there was a redesign of the park, so that's a very significant piece. Anyway, okay, Fred, the other Fred.
Fred, number two. I was instructed to give a list of things about it. My name is Shredwood John Michael Patrick Fitzsimmons, former Army, Weldon Pond's resident. Some of the things that I've been involved in is George Ryans and I spent more time than we would have liked at the Historical Society downtown Hamilton, going back to where we were one, finding where the children actioned from Fairfield Township residents. Went there to there in my neighborhood, heard about a few veterans that I want to make sure got their plaques. Every veteran I went to referred me to another one. Started with four, ended up with about 12 that day. And then the parade, worked with George Ryans again, obtained vehicles. Was disappointed that Mr. McAdie didn't join me in my Model T this year, but we put him in another vehicle. I believe he was in his own this year, but, and George and I also put the signs out in the neighborhood for the flag group and the signed cards the day of. And last but not least, right now, after a month of relaxing, now comes the Third Annual Carveray Classic in September. So the last thing I'm going to do is pass one out to everybody in the building today. I know some of you know about it, but we'd like to get a little bigger outcome as we did last year. That kind of sums it up.
Thank you. You're going to sneak up here, Barney? Okay, go over there.
Yeah, I'm Barney Landry, and I was added to the committee in about the last two or three years, so I missed all of the original planning, but I've been able to take part in the subsequent completion of what we have up there so far and take part in some of the fundraising involved, and which is an ongoing thing. We still have some way to go on funds, and so we're still looking for that. So my main message is, if you know anybody that's looking for some, a place for some loose change, we still have it. So, all right, thank you. And of course, for those of you that aren't here regularly, Barney not only has helped us with fundraising, he has been our biggest contributor to the memorial. He's also been in connection with the DFW post in Liberty Township and who came to the dedication. You might say, well, okay, well, that's what they should do. Well, they were juggling two events that day at the same time. They had to recruit guys who were willing to cover, because the original group was committed to Westchester, so I just want to give them a pitch at the same time. Okay, Jack.
Hi, I'm Jack Williams, I live in Weldon Pond, some of the Air Force veteran. And the day after I retired, I was snagged onto this committee by Fred. I'm not the only one. And I seem to have inherited the job of loading in veterans. When we find them and we can't find the people, I'm loading them into the system and trying to find more veterans. Fred forgot to mention that Barney was also the only one with a bridge named after him on the committee, too.
Thank you, Jack, and we are about to exhaust the space on the Veterans Wall, so that'll be one of the coming events of where we're going to go next to be able to have space. Next, we've got Frank McGumry.
Thank you. As you heard, I'm Frank McGumry. I was an Air Force veteran, I live in Weldon Pond's neighborhood, and it was a privilege to work on this project with a number of people. Ralph and I and Tim Smith did the design criteria for the fitters for the concrete windows. We monitored the perimeter construction, but along with Ken Geiss's help. We worked out stone to increase the space for diamond plaques on the monuments. And we started the initial design, the initial banner process with plaques, which now is being handled by Ralph and Chuck Williams, and it's a privilege to work with some of you guys, with our ups and downs, but thank you for your help, too.
And Frank deserves the credit for connecting with Barney to bring him aboard, so, and that's part of what all this has been about, is relationships. And if you notice, Weldon Pond's comes to us quite a few times. Most of us had no connection with Fairfield Township before we moved here, sometime in the last 20 years. Part of my question is, where's the rest of the people that live in Fairfield Township that we could really use? Now, we've had folks contribute quite a bit who have been here for a lot longer than we have, so we certainly appreciate that. Now, where we're going from here, Veterans Day is not too far off, November the 11th. And so the first thing will be to firm up which day we're going to hold the observance, as well as whether that should be indoor or outdoor, or we play it. We'll see. We already have a commitment from the Community Christian Church that we can use their facilities if need be that either day. They're more than happy, and that has worked out well in the past. So the other part of that is, and I've mentioned this to Julie, how many times, Julie, have I mentioned to you? My term is about over. It's time for us to make the transition from being a separate committee working for, on behalf of the trustees. When Susan Birding, who was the president of the trustees, asked us to take on the initiative in 2017, it was to make recommendations in regards to the design of the memorial, as well as to lead the fundraising aspect of this. Well, we ended up doing a bit more than just make the recommendations on the design. We actually, as Ralph alluded to, were knee-deep in the actual construction. Not that we were actually digging the holes or whatever, the footers, but working with the design and the drawings and whatever. So in fundraising, we have succeeded. And fundraising, we have succeeded in attracting $200,000 in private donations, and that has been obviously the biggest part of the funding that we've been able to generate. We've been fortunate initially, there was the commitment of $50,000 from the township, and then the $100,000 that was kind of cycled in through the state capital fund budget from last year. So, anyway, those things all came together, and as you might expect, prices went up, and so we ended up, the project which was originally going to be around $325, plus an all-in that would push it up another 20, it's going to be close to $400,000. So, but anyway, we've tried to always get ahead of the game when it comes to ordering that grant, and then actually that's the next step we're in right now. The only part that we actually still need to do to do our, what we've committed to do, and that's the phases one through four, and the last part of four are actually entry monuments. And we have the opportunity of applying for a grant, which I put together a proposal, and Greg Stagg has again dressed it up, and hopefully we'll be able to submit that by the end of the week to the Hamilton Community Foundation for consideration by the Michael J. Corrigan Fund Committee. So, anyway, if that comes through, like we hope will, that will cover purchasing all that grant, and the etching for that, as well as underwriting the cost of the veterans' plaques, the local veterans' plaques, those are complimentary, so we're absorbing that cost, which is fine, but if they're willing to assist us with that, that would be great also. So, Julie, it's been one of the big things, and we don't have to decide that tonight, thank goodness, and we don't have to even decide it necessarily this week, but the monuments that will be in the entryway, one of those will be the acknowledgements one. It's always kind of like, whose names are down there, what size and whatever. So, we got another example sent on to Julie, so I'm going to say, don't worry about that having to be perfect or whatever. We're going to send a version and indicate, this is just to give you an idea for the committee, okay? So we can continue that discussion internally, you know, what names, what companies, size, whatever, and location. So, anyway, you will really be particularly impressed, I think, with the entry monument for the memorial. Now, if you look and see the temporary sign that we got out there, there is the image of what they call the fallen soldier, which was the rifle in the boots with helmet. We are going to have an emergent statue that comes out of a concave part of that monument. And so, I think that'll be pretty stirring. So, anyway, that will be there, and we hope to have the proposal in by the end of the week. It's actually really completely done up to this point. I drive for Greg Stagg nuts, and then he drives me nuts, and so we go back and forth, but anyway, it's been great, because he has charged us a dime for the amount of time he's put into this, in regards to editing and doing our graphics work. So, anyway, one other, before I finish, is to thank the cooperation and support we got with the dedication from each of the departments, the administration, the public works, and obviously the fire department and the police department. And that's not just the parade, that was everything, you know, and it was hard to keep creature comforts that day, but, you know, they did their best. So we really appreciate that, and we want to also appreciate the help from Chuck and Diane here in regards to the plaque processing, because the way this goes, a donation goes into the foundation, then the template ends up eventually going through here, and then to Argum Stone. So, it sounds complicated, but everybody's got their piece of the action. So, we're pretty well caught up to any of the plaques, so if there's somebody, for some reason, comes out there and thinks their plaque's not up there, and they deserve the plaque, if they can let Chuck know, then he'll let us know. But I think we actually found three plaques that were missing in action, and so they redid those. So, anyway, that's possible. So that's kind of where we are, and we look forward to the township taking over, you know, the events, I mean, just think, there was no ongoing dedication, I mean, Memorial Day or Veterans Day. You now have those besides, obviously, a memorial that has stirred people in their hearts and in their minds when they go by. So, that's my words for now. So, any questions or comments that any of you have, we'd appreciate it.
Questions?
Well, we would just reiterate how thankful we are for the work you guys have done, the whole committee and the whole process. It's just been awesome. It was a great day for the dedication, and anybody that hasn't seen it, it's right out back, take time and go, and it's just, it's the best thing happening in the town. Thank you, Fred.
Thank you all.
Yeah, something else I'd like to see, because this is what the memorial is now, a historical monument in Fairfield Township. It will be part of Fairfield Township's history, documenting the veterans and their service to the country, not only today, but for future veterans. So, what I would like to ask staff to do is to put together a narrative on how that Veterans Memorial came to be, and Mrs. von der Haer, Mr. Goins, perhaps you could work on that, but I'd like to kind of bring in that whole perspective of what's been done. I only know what's happened in the last 10 years, and that was when John McGuinness, and I don't want to forget him, he's one of our former trustees, when he and I ran, we wanted to have that Veterans Memorial there, and that was one of the things that we felt needed to be in Fairfield Township, and that was something that we wanted to work on, and something that we wanted to have accomplished back in, and we started thinking about that in 2013 and 2014. Terry Schornhorst was definitely in support of that as well, and I'd even posit to say that the former board members, going back to when trustee McAbby was there before, that they, I think, too, were in support of that Veterans Memorial. So what I'd like to see is something that documents that and talks about the roots of that memorial. I think Dan Hare played a role on conducting some sessions for this, too, and then definitely the gentlemen here in the room tonight documenting what they did and what it is, because this is, it is a historical record, it's a beautiful monument, it should be there for many, many, many years to come, and I just think that as that, I think we should document all of the work that everyone has done in order to make that happen.
Yeah, I can't wait for the entryway to be done, because that way, you gentlemen, and I'm not sure if Joyce will also be included in that, is a permanent recognition of the work that you did will be etched or engraved into those entryways, and that's the only way people are really going to know who were the minds and hearts behind that amazing memorial and monument, because for generations to come, they'll read those names of people that put the time and the effort and the blood and the sweat and the, I don't know how many pairs of shoes you might have gone through walking door to door, but you've done a lot for us, and we're very grateful for it, and it will be a fitting tribute and recognition of the work that you've done, and I can't wait for that to go out, because that story needs to be told. So thank you all very much.
Last thing I want to mention that we've already talked about, and we may even be able to have enough money to do it, I don't know, but it would be certainly on the next go, a Phase Five, if there's ever going to be taken care of that, and that would be a QR code, and maybe initially on the entry monuments, that gives a short synopsis of what people will see at the memorial. And then we can actually do those on the different service branch monuments, so then you can explain what these images are on that, and particularly for our young folks, and that's one of the recommendations that came up from the school folks, is that this would make it a lot more interesting and engaging to students if we had some tech to go with it, and that would, and it can be updated, and this is something that Jim Smith at Argum Stone is familiar with because of the number of memorials he's done across the country. So, anyway, that's another one of those to be continued, so.
And could that be done on each of the benches as well?
That's right.
To give a brief history of each of the major conflicts as well?
Yeah, yeah.
That would be wonderful, that's a great idea.
And their active history.
So, I mean, we might do it on a small scale initially, it kind of depends on what the total cost would be and who we were working with, but it does have some exciting possibilities, and it also has the capability, you know, technology's going to keep moving on. QR codes will look pretty antiquated probably in a few more years, but there'll be something to take that place of that, the type of access to data, you know, in a voice system. So, anyway, it's exciting. If you have, I do have a price, and I've just mentioned this, I got probably the last two copies of this, and I'm home on them, okay? But if you know some folks who really would like to have a copy of the program from the dedication, let me know, because I got a price on as low as 25 of these, as low as 50. So, I'm not getting a cut of the action here, I'm just, there are some folks who would like to have a copy, either because their name's in it, or they have a bit of the history, or there was a family member recognized, particularly the folks that were killed in action. So, anyway, so Julie will pass that word if we're interested. So, thank you lots, and thanks to our committee for the work they put into this, and having to put up with me, and of course, as you kind of alluded to, Michael, my wife, so, they always used to say that line, but this has really been a challenge, particularly when I do most of my work about between 11:00 PM and 1:00 in the morning, so.
Great. Thank you guys, thank you very much. I don't think, thank you really adequately, and they say what they've done, but that's what we have for now.
And somebody mentioned about trying to get the blue sign on the regional highway, telling people where it's at.
Yeah, exactly.
Good idea.
Okay, let's look at that. Could you look into that, Mrs. von der Haer? Okay, great. Can you put my glasses back on? All right. The next item is Butler County Mental Health and Addiction Recovery Services Board. Dr. Rasmus?
Thank you very much, I just have some things that I want to hand out, and I've got about 50 or 20 copies. So, I do have a lot of copies and evidence in support of this presentation. Matt is going to present with me. I'm Dr. Scott Rasmus, the Executive Director of the Butler County Mental Health and Addiction Recovery Services Board. Matt Himm is our Board President. This presentation is on the Butler County Federal Health Crisis Stabilization Unit. This is a mental health and addiction unit that we hope to bring to the county. Its location is slated for the old Butler County Care Facility. It's in the city of Hamilton, but it's up right on the border with Fairfield Township. And so what I wanted to do is talk a little bit about our board, so that you're familiar and the audience is familiar to this, and then we'll get into different aspects of the unit, and then evidence for why we think it should be implemented where it's at, and so, I guess, let's get started. And if we could go to the second slide here, you'll see the board is an Adamus Board, which is an Alcohol and Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board. Our board is organized around Ohio Vice Code 340, and it's established to, as you see, to promote a unified system of mental health care. The board has a governing board of 18 members, there's about half of my members in the audience tonight, who plan, strategic plan, assess, contract, budgets, advocate for residents in Butler County. My staff, which is the other part of the board, has 11 staff, two subcontractors, who are one an attorney and a psychiatrist, so a total of 13 staff. We have five mental health professionals on staff. They don't see clients, they're basically oversight and administrative. Our budget is $18 million. Our funding, as you can see, is 57% local, we've got two tax levies, 29% federal, and 14% state. So if we can go to the next slide. We have 14 P for Service Contract Providers, there's about a third of my providers in the room tonight. We contract with them for various services, they do the hands-on work, and again, you know, we, basically oversight, and various programs. If you ever have a chance to go on our board docs where we capture our board meetings, you'll find a bunch of budgets and AIPs, annual implementation plans, and you'll see various programs, probably 100 different programs supporting our residents anywhere from the very young preschool programs up to the very, the elderly clients in our county program called Uplift, which is an evidence-based practice out of the University of Washington State. You'll see, we served last year 37,431. I do have copies of that document, our annual report in my box here that I can provide to anyone that's interested. That's almost 10% of the county we touch, if you think the county's like 390,000, so it's quite a bit, and that includes prevention, education, and treatment. My staff includes, well, I guess it says seven lines, it's there, social workers, counselors, marriage and family therapists, psychiatrists, staff-administered oversight focus, and no board services. So we can go on to the next slide. So we're going to get into now the Butler County Crisis Stabilization Unit. Again, there's a body of work, two years' worth of work on this, incorporating focus groups and advisory committee discussions with national, local, and national models. Commissioner Carpenter and I went down to North Carolina to visit RI International, SAMSO-recognized evidence-based practice models from RI International last August, as well as two Ohio models, and one specific model out of Oregon that we patterned our model after. So, and then we procured architectural services to lay out the projected rehab of the care facility over there at the Board of Elections. I have copies of that, if anybody's interested, and we've estimated the rehab costs and the operational costs for the unit, and so I'll present and talk about that in a minute, so we can move on to the next one. So as you see, the proposed location is a Butler County Care Facility. Right now it sits empty. The commissioners are supportive of our work, and in effect, they've allocated $3 million in ARCA funds for the rehab and upgrade of that facility. So this facility will have 10 observation chairs and 10 beds, for a total of 20 clients that it will be able to serve. The chairs represent a 23-hour observation unit. You'll see that this unit, on the bottom there, it says ATR, is an assessment, triage, and referral only. So this is a quick assessment, treatment, and referral to our system, the federal health system, as I indicated, is 14 contract providers and growing. And so, obviously, we have contracts with those providers to help address the referrals of these clients in the future. Average length of stay is 12 hours of that, 23-hour units are less than a day. The reason why we have the extended beds is that we realized that somebody were to come in on a, say, Friday at 11:00, and it's a holiday weekend, and one of our referral sources was not available, we can basically hold a client for up to three days before we can refer them to the system. So it's sort of a short-term availability there. This is not for the worst of the worst, folks that are psychotics, folks that are violent, folks that need ED and hospital care. care, psychiatric and hospital care, obviously they'll be referred to those facilities even upon assessment at the facility. And you'll see I have a document that I can provide. I've provided to some already that lists the indications and contraindications for clients related to this. So if we can move on to the next slide. So it's open 24/7/365. Police and community drop-off areas. We're looking at five minutes or less. This is one of the important criteria of the RI International model. I think in some locations, they've gone down to two to three minutes. Their focus is to let the police do what they do best and be able to drop folks off quickly and, and community members also. Others, limited medical care at this facility and some limited medications. Target is about 4,800 clients in the first year with a projected 10% increase in the second year. Cost, $1 million to capital rehab and a $7 million operational budget. Matt had some flyers. A lot of you have seen that, those flyers representing this unit. And I'm happy to provide those for those that are interested. There's architectural drawings too of the, of the unit. If you're familiar with the care facility, there's floor, the northwest wing. When you come into the Board of Elections in that facility, you go down the back is the care facility and then you drive down over the hill down to the bottom. And there's a turnaround down there. That's the northwest wing. We are projecting that that northwest wing will be the drop-off area for police in the community. There'll be a police drop-off and intake section. And there'll be a community drop-off and intake section. Triage will begin, assessment will begin down on the lower floor. There's an elevator that'll take clients up to the upper level of the northwest wing. And that's where the observation chairs and beds will reside. We also propose that the north wing be held and provided for future expansion of this unit because we've had some indications that 20 beds is a good start or 10 observation chairs and 10 beds is a good start. And maybe 30 or 35 may be needed. That's observation, an expansion in observation, chairs and beds to fulfill the needs in Butler County. Just realize there's going to be nursing stations up there. There may be some limited med closets. There'll be showers, recreational rooms and things like that are needed, are needed for the residents of this facility. Clients are preliminary indications and contraindications. I do have a handout on that. As I've indicated, those that are psychotic, those that are in serious addiction, those that may be violent, those that, you know, may not forego weapons would not be indicated for this facility. Those that would be indicated for this facility is anybody that's sort of not in that particular population group and friends, family members, police, community folks, fire, you know, EMS, you know, who determine that a client is indicated for this facility. And we've got some education to do of the public, especially with the indications and contraindications. That will be provided so that the community is well aware throughout Butler County of what, who's indicated for this, for this particular facility. So here's the evidence of need. I think what I want to present, well, Matt, why don't you present on the poll that we just did?
So hello, my name is Matthew Himm. I'm the sitting president of the Butler County Mental Health and Addiction Recovery Services Board. I am local, born and raised. I'm a Fairfield graduate. We hired a consulting company called Burgess and Burgess to, to send out a, a poll of 600 registered voters here in Butler County. And when we started getting the information and data back, it was actually very staggering, the amount of support that the residents of Butler County were showing in favor of a crisis stabilization unit. Two specific questions inside of the poll. One of them was question 26, which stated, are you in favor, strongly agree, disagree, of this facility being put through your community? So it's not at all or just what happened, but specifically in the community. And it had a 67% strongly agree and agree position from the residents. Question 27 was a little bit more generalized in terms of whether you supported it at all, not necessarily in their direct community. And that had a 69% affirmative rate in terms of the residents being in favor of this facility being in the community. In an advocacy role, I am a recovering addict, as is my wife. She's a board diagnosis and she has been hospitalized here in Butler County. At one point she was in Fort Hamilton, which we all know no longer exists. There is not a facility right now inside of Butler County to, besides Beckett, for us to take people that may be sick. If facilities like this existed when I was actively in prison, sick, I may not have stayed sick as long as I did, or with my wife potentially. We have half of our board members here in advocacy role. We have one third of almost half of the providers in the audience right now in advocacy role. It's plain to us that the community wants this to happen. The providers would like to see this happen. I would love to see this happen as somebody that is a consumer of these products, as is my family. And it's something that is dearly needed and it's a huge gap that we're missing inside of our behavioral health system in Butler County as a whole. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it back to Scott to finish up the presentation and we'll be more than happy to answer a lot of questions if there are.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. You know, I think the, the thought here is, is that, and there's evidence to the fact that if you get folks sooner in their mental health presentations and, and substance use presentations, the better is the ultimate result, you know? And that's what this, this center would be sort of targeted for. And so before things become more severe and more challenging to address later on in life. Suicides, if you are aware, we had our highest number of suicides last year in Butler County, 64. That outpaced the previous high over the last 21 years of 51. So that's almost 25% higher. That's, that's very significant. Meth came in at 185 deaths last year. We had a high of about 231 about three or four years ago and a decrease down to about 170. They've been on the increase since then. And it's a meth, phenol combination, sort of a lethal, lethal drug cocktail that we would want to try to address head on and early on. Our annual report again, the number 37,431 probably would be higher. COVID has, has impacted that. Obviously it's been, over the pandemic, it's been harder to see folks face-to-face. A lot of it's been teleconference. And that's, even though it's good, it's, it's provided another intervention strategy to utilize with our clients. It's restricted. I think some of our increase, I think we've decreased just a little bit. And, and so I've also provided articles which are for your perusal if you're interested. One that I wrote for the ACA Today Magazine in 2017, which basically petitioned, I think you've all have heard, that one out of five people have mental illness. With that meta-analysis that I did through significant and well-known websites such as the American Psychological Association, CDC and whatnot, I determined that that number is higher. It's more between one and four and one at five. And then an article that I just presented and, and got published through the Journal of News on the 29th of May, basically petitioned that the pandemic has caused more stress and anxiety and substance abuse issues. So that number is probably more towards one in four now. So anyway, this basically lays out a, you know, a evidence, you know, in support of this facility that is best indicated for it. So can we go to the next slide? So I, I just wanted to provide for the public these numbers, you know, the county crisis and resource line 24/7, that's our hotline, 365-1844-CRISIS. The mobile response and stabilization team group, that's for adolescents and families that, how they define a crisis. So the MRSS team. And then the Butler County Board. We're always available for consultations with the public. So that's a number for anybody to call. Just realize we're only during business hours, Monday through Friday. I think our number rolls over to the, the hotline, you know, after hours on weekends. Next slide. Okay, question and answer. So I'm going to open it up. Please ask what you would like us to, to hear and consider. And I guess what I want to say is I've met with the trustees. I've met with the police chief, the fire chief and others, administrator of Von Behr. And we've had some very good discussion. It's been very fruitful. I want to say that we want to partner with you. We realize this is on the border between Hamilton and Fairfield Township. And we want to go through the process of fully vetting this and talking about this with you and hopefully gain your endorsement at some point. But we've got some more education work to do at this, at this time. Questions on the board? I have a couple clarifying questions. On one of your slides, you said that, oh, a couple of, you had 37,431. Is that just the patients that you saw or if you saw them more than once, that's included in that number? So how many touches have you had, so to speak?
I believe that's touches. That's unduplicated. Just realized that that's anywhere from one touch to the same client maybe being touched throughout the year, maybe once a week. But that is individual touches. So that's unduplicated.
It's unduplicated. So 37,000 plus individuals that you have seen.
Correct.
Potentially more than 50,000 touches, so to speak, because you've seen people multiple times?
Correct.
Okay.
That's a correct statement. Yeah.
And then one of your slides, it was, you said 23-hour units. I'm just, does that mean you have 23 one-hour units or you have 23-hour, like they could be seen up to 23-hour at a time, units?
So what the focus of that is, is that, and that's the observation clients, is a 23-hour maximum in that observation unit with the average being about half of that.
Okay.
So, so with folks coming in, obviously there's going to be some, some extended stay clients. I, I think it probably will revolve around maybe about a 20-hour length of stay in that unit. But that's the target, you know, to quickly assess, triage, and refer. Clients not to stay there.
And those will be the rooms that have the beds in it, obviously?
Well, the, the observation chairs will be chairs, like, you know, front chairs, you know, or lounge chair, excuse me, for clients to sit and, and have some respite and some assessment and triage, you know, right there in that room amongst others. It's sort of like a group room. The beds will be in separate rooms.
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, we've had two excellent conversations over the last couple of weeks. You know, these problems don't have any boundaries. You know, I know we're talking about where it's physically going to be located, you know, just outside the township boundaries. We've talked about how we could communicate with the community to let them know that this is a possibility to be there. So we had, we had suggested maybe a town hall meeting and maybe we do some type of mailer to set up for the meeting to, again, have this kind of presentation, get questions and concerns answered by the residents of Fairfield Township. So I'd be, I'd be in favor of that. And I think they would be too, but it'd be up to the board, I guess, to decide whether we want to sponsor that, so to speak.
You know, I could clarify and trustee McAbee is correct. He suggested that we have some sort of public forum, maybe multiple public forums on this. Matt and I and my staff that I'm looking at locations such as Butler Tech, maybe Miami University, Hamilton, to have that capacity to have an education session with the public. We're looking at towards the end of August, maybe the 28th through 29th, and maybe focus on Fairfield Township and Hamilton for that first session. And then maybe have another couple of sessions for the rest of the county.
Because you will service the whole county.
Correct.
You do mail and you're.
Yeah. And so that's the aim. And I think that's a good suggestion. And, you know, I want to say we're partnering obviously with you all and trustee McAbee to pull that off and make that happen.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I would be in favor of having town halls to get feedback from residents. I, I think everybody has someone in their family that's had mental health issues or addiction issues. And so I think this is a needed service. And while it's located in Hamilton, I don't want to get into the habit or practice of dictating our will on another municipality. So I think discussions with them would be appropriate as well. And I would also like, love to get our police chiefs' input on this as well and fire chiefs' input. So getting all that information within the next few months would be, would be great.
Is there some sort of timeline that you're looking at, doctor?
No, I, I think we're looking at about a three to six month timeline right now. We realize that we want to educate folks to the fullest extent. And then we'll come back and ask you for your support. But I think it's premature now. We've got some work to do. And I think the conversations we're having are great. I really appreciate it. We're learning as we go and making adjustments and really understanding the concerns that each community has. I know we talked with trustee McAbee, you know, that Princeton Ave area there is an area that is trafficked and, and worry about people getting hit by vehicles and things like that and no sidewalks and, you know, what can be done to, to prevent stuff like that. There's communities there, you know, just to worry or to consider, you know, about make sure they're safe, just like when any other new business like this opens up. And then the clients, to make sure that if they're dropped off there, there's transportation to take them back to where they come from and multiple types of transportation, anything from Lyft and Uber to EMS. So they need to go to an ED and things like that. So, so anyway, we're open to, to look at all these and build the infrastructure for this unit to support and address those concerns to the best of our ability. Just realize nothing's perfect. You do the best you can. And then you have open communication with communities such as yourselves. And then we make adjustments as we go to address concerns.
So I'd like to add something briefly to that. The board as a whole believes that diligence has been done here. We have multiple years of investment in taxpayer dollars in Dr. Rasmus's time, board staff time, even commissioner's time, our time, to where eventually we have to have a decision made because we do have so many resources involved. So it, it does look like maybe by the end of the year, we need to have some type of decision made. And there's also other reasons for this. One of the main reasons being this may have levy implications for our board. If we do move forward with this, we do need to make sure that we have an idea how this is going to be funded in the future. So we do have an opportunity to potentially have a levy on the ballot within the next nine to 12 months. We don't know. We haven't made a decision yet. But if this doesn't go forward, that will, that will have a very drastic decision for us to make, whether we're going to need those funds or not. So we're to the point where it's just an educational piece, education in municipalities, townships, our residents, to address all concerns that are in the community. And we're more than happy to, to have as many town halls, meetings as necessary. I'll sit in every single meeting that I have to, every presentation that I have to, to make sure that this is done because it is such an important, vital piece to our entire behavioral health system. And I'm a very firm believer that this is very, very much needed. So.
Anything else? I do want to thank the members of your board that are here tonight for coming out and supporting you. And the volunteer work that you do is very important for our communities and our county. And so thank you for volunteering your time to do that. We do appreciate you very much. Look forward to having more conversation about this. We do know it's a need. And hopefully we'll be able to wrap things up for you by the end of the year. That would be great.
Well, I want to thank you for your time and, and the discussion. And we look forward to continuing discussion.
And he's looking for two more board members, right?
Yes.
So anybody out there?
Yep.
Interested?
We will have a board development committee back in session in September when we come out of summer recess. If anybody knows anybody would like to be a sitting board member, please give them a referral to the board. And the application process is relatively simple. So we'd like to interview them.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you all very much.
Again, if you're here supporting them, feel free to stay or feel free to go. We have some more.
Kathy, Kathy has to stay. Kathy has to stay. I'm going to toss you out. I'm going to toss you out.
Okay, while they're making their way out, we'll move on to our next presentation, and that is going to be Chief Charlie.
My presentation is Reference Resolution 23-102, which will be in front of you here shortly. As you're aware, the biggest challenges in law enforcement today is to hire personnel, good candidates. In keeping our attempts to be contemporary, we've realized that we're going to have to consider, and that's my request, to pay for academy classes for folks that we would hire, short we would hire folks that are not certified, and incented through the academy, and then pay for that academy, but reimburse them for those academies if it's somewhat recently completed. The standard is also to pay level one or step one of a contract, so what I'm requesting is essentially $10,000 or not exceed $10,000, and then the hourly wage for academy to go through the academy. I looked at two academies, Butler Tech, they're pretty similar, 9505, including Brooks and Supplies, Scarlet Oaks is 81, 82, including Brooks and Supplies, Ohio State Highway Patrol Academy could be an option. It is free, however, it is almost impossible to get into it, because they've established a clientele, several departments already send their people there, so they're locked up. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't make an attempt and send them for free, obviously, because that's what we would want, but it would not be, I would not consider that to be an extra obligation that that's going to happen. As it relates to why we want to do this, City of Fairfield pays for candidates for the academy, sends them to the academy, pays them the level one or step one wage. Westchester, the same, the City of Hamilton is also doing the same. Ross Township, when I offered this report, this was offered Thursday, they actually got approval Thursday night for it, so they're doing it. Hamilton Township is also researching it, City of Miamisburg also does it, just about everybody's doing it now. The candidates also are calling us and asking us if we pay for the academy. Up to this point in time, obviously, you've answered that we don't, so they'll go on to the next department that does, so there's no doubt that we probably have lost a couple. I do not think that this will be dramatically changing the number of candidates that we have, but I think if we don't do it, we're going to get nobody. I think it'll be helpful, I think it's also a commitment that they'll have by going through the academy, by us paying for that academy, that they'll be staying with us for a while. I worked with Mr. Barbier to determine, like, an agreement, what if they don't make it, what if they leave in a year, what if they don't leave, what if they stayed, but what if they leave within three years? So we do have a kind of a proposal, it'll be an agreement, Mr. Barbier will review the final agreement, but in essence, let me find it here. The recruit will be obligated to refund the entire cost of the academy if they voluntarily quit, hard of the one-year commitment after the academy, reimburse two-thirds if they voluntarily quit between years one and two, and reimburse one-third if they voluntarily quit between years two and three. Signing bonuses are out there, some folks are getting signing bonuses, I would rather not do that now. I may come back to you and make that request, but we're not there yet.
I mean, that's what this is, anyway, right?
I'm sorry?
I mean, you can look at us paying...
Sure, sure. But in addition to that, some are also giving additional signing bonus, I just don't want to do that.
How long's Fairfield been doing that?
Actually Fairfield has been doing it for a long time. Some departments have done it for a while.
Two years, five years?
Actually, I talked to Chief Maynard, and even when he went through the academy, it was paid for, so that's a standard that they've had. Your bigger departments have their own academies. Cleveland, Columbus, Cincinnati, Dayton have their own academies, so you are payday wage also while you're at the academy. So it's not a foreign concept, for us, it's a new concept, and we need to get basically online with everybody else at this moment in time.
What about, what about other townships in Butler County going together and having their own academy, something like that?
Well, that's very difficult. The academies are governed by OPADA, Ohio Police Officers Training Academy, there's a commission that sets the standards, the hours are anywhere from 800 to 900 hours, you have to certify instructors, it would be nearly impossible to form that, and they're very, they have actually thought about closing down some academies because they don't meet standards. So while it's a great idea, realistically, it's almost impossible to do.
So it takes 26 weeks to go through the academy?
Yeah, roughly, I believe I had the numbers at, like, 700 and 800.
The algorithm would just say 800.
Correct, correct.
So we would hire the people, pay them starting wage, and then pay them those 20 weeks, 23 weeks, or whatever, and pay the...
Yeah, so basically, what I've got is Butler Tech, dollar 770, at our step one, that's 21 for 29, 10, plus the roughly 9,000, 10,000. Scarlet Oaks is 800, that goes to 22, 264, as far as salary during that time. And it's a...
So 30, 30-some thousand?
Yes.
Is what the cost would be?
Correct.
And then, once they graduate the academy, then the three years would start, or two years would start, or anything?
Well, it's the three years after then. So they graduate from the academy, they still have at least one-year probation, and we can extend probation, which we have done on occasion. So the first year's probationary, certainly they can be released on a probationary release, but our effort is to hire the right people, which you're never going to until you hire them, and not lose anybody. But it's become, we've had probably 10 interviews here recently, and just not good enough to be hired. And it's just where the, where the profession has gone to right now, it's that difficult. And as you have heard before, fire is pretty close to us as it relates to that.
So again, you're talking 35,000 per candidate to have somebody graduate, what if they don't graduate from the academy?
Then it would reimburse us. We would make every effort to reimburse, to get reimbursed, yes.
The whole thing, or just the cost of the academy?
It would be, I would defer to Mr. Barbier on that.
Well, we can do either one by the contract that we have. That will be the legislative decision, I think, if you want to have them, and that's something that Chief Thomas and I had discussed as well, because there are a lot of training costs in addition to the academy, plus you buy a lot of equipment
Right.
in addition to the academy for these recruits, and, you know, I think it's an administrative and legislative decision as to how much you want them to give back, if they don't complete a year, or if they don't complete the academy, et cetera. We can draw up a contract that says anything you want, from a legal standpoint.
Any example of the fire department, for the paramedic part, it's three years, isn't it?
No, we do a five-year paramedic. And we're seeing a circle here. 25 years ago, when you got hired by a police department, a fire department, they sent you to training, you took a, like, a civil service exam, or you weren't civil service, you got hired, I was sent to paramedic school, I was sent to the fire academy, so based on the availability of qualified candidates, a lot of places are hiring off the street and going back to sending people to school. As Chief Chapala and I both know, it's very hard in that initial interview process to identify if that candidate's going to pass the class and become a good employee. I mean, it's, we do the best we can, but the log writer and I have had many discussions on, what do we do with these folks if they don't pass? We've been very fortunate that we've managed to keep all of our people who have went to school, we have a lot of them that work for us full-time now, but it's become a necessity for us to invest in new people, and whether we can successfully get money back, I don't think needs to be the highest priority, it's trying to get the right candidates and getting them educated so that we can provide the services that we're desperately trying to provide.
Yeah, additionally, academies are averaging maybe eight, 10 people. It used to be 20, maybe 24, 25, maybe even 30, and so with that small number, everybody wants them, and then generally speaking, they may not be the best candidates. So it's just become, to what Chief Thomas said, it's a standard, it's, we're only trying to reach a standard that just by everybody else in the area is doing right now.
And the other challenge is the cost to the individual. There aren't many 20-year-olds or 21-year-olds that can pump out 10 grand for school, so if they can't find a grant or some type of a program, and, you know, if it takes them four or five years to save up 10 grand, they're rapidly not becoming candidate, because they're competing with people significantly younger than them. So I view it as, there's some details we need to massage to protect us and try not to waste money, but it's becoming what's necessary for us to get candidates interested in us. If other places are doing it and we don't do it, we're going to suffer. It's the same thing as the comparable wage issues. If we don't provide it and everybody else does, they're going to bypass us to go other places, so.
Yeah, well, we don't know exactly where those people ended up that called us, asking for us to pay the academy, we don't know if they ended up anywhere, but we know that they did not, they did not end up with us, so.
Well, you know, it sounds like a good idea, the first, you know, my 20 years is the first time I had this conversation with police department, and the paramedic investment. We've been very successful. Second time around with this, you know, so that's all good, and I'd be in favor of that, I just want to put some teeth in it to make sure they're as committed as we are, if we want to keep them. You know, maybe 20% a year, so, again, three years, you know, we've got a lot of upfront costs, whether we send them to the academy or not, the equipment, and training, and...
And in researching, three years is about what everybody's doing. So if we do the five years, then that's another reason for them to go somewhere else.
Well, we'll do three years and just not, not make it 33, 33, and, you know, stay with us at least three years, repay us back.
And that would be something that we would discuss.
Which he said we could do.
Yes.
Even the wage part, I mean, that would be hard to do, but at the same time, that's a big commitment on our, on our police budget, 30, 35 plus equipment.
I don't believe we could take the wages back, because that probably would be a Fair Labor Standards Act.
I thought you said we could all get...
No, I said training.
Oh, training.
And that would include training and equipment.
Okay.
Because we do, you do a lot of training, that would have just happened at the academy, plus you give these guys a lot of equipment, especially the fire department.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't be doing anything until they were certified, so they passed the test, right?
Correct.
They could just be basically going to...
Yeah, then we'd go, preferably, to a full-time academy. You know, there's full-time and there's part-time academies, the part-time academies go forever, and the full-time academies, no, we don't want that. So the full-time academies are quicker, and his sole, or sole purpose would be to study and pass and do well and get physically fit, so that would be our goal, and obviously then you have to time it with, when is that academy starting? There's two academies, local academy, there's Sinclair and Dayton, there's Butler Tech, there is Scarlet Oaks, there may be one that we don't know that somebody...
Do they start in the summertime, or...
They, well, Sinclair is pretty much like a college, so they start fall, and then, I guess it'd be the wintertime. The others, there's just one that started like two weeks ago, which is pretty much midsummer, and another one is ongoing, State Patrol Academy, I believe, just started also.
That's the one that can't get in?
It's, I'm not saying it's impossible, but I'm saying it's...
You said it was impossible.
Almost impossible to get in, always, always keep that optional. But we would like to be the guinea pigs to work with Larry, to try to get something going here.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, my main concern is just the commitment level, because if we are investing in these, in these people, I would like them to commit back to us, and I, the one question I had was answered, and that was how the retention portion of this, if that was customary to other departments, and you're saying it was, the one and two and three, so the three years seems a little short to me. I would prefer if it was longer, especially considering the investment we would be making, but if it's...
I agree with that, except for the fact that everybody else is doing three, so then we're back to, well, you're not competitive enough.
Right.
And there are places that are buying out them
Sure.
without even breaking an eye, they'll pay for the academy and take them anyways, so there's only so much we're going to do to keep them.
Okay.
Very competitive right now, very competitive.
It's a good day to be looking for a job.
It is.
So you would, you would change your recruiting based on this, right?
Yeah, basically, if this is approved, we're going to be at the academy next week, recruiting.
At the academy?
Yeah, there's an academy that started, Scarlet Oaks, no, I'm sorry, Butler Tech just started, and they know that we're presenting, but then so did Ross, and Ross Township's chief is also an instructor at Butler Tech, and so is Captain Lanier. So I'm telling you, competition is fierce.
So if you go over there and you find somebody, you're going to be in your harm, somebody's already paid for their tuition for the first couple of weeks, right?
Not necessarily, if possible, we would have, we would have to figure out if they have, yeah, and if somebody's already paid for their tuition.
We could still be reimbursed if we wanted to hire them.
No, that's true.
We could still pay.
Yeah, I agree with that.
We're going to lose somebody for a couple of weeks.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I do like the idea, even if it's three years, say, like, you have to get two years, if you leave after two years, if you leave after one year, you're paying 100%.
After two years, we pay 100%.
I think we could even go, you're paying 66%.
100%? 125%?
Mr. Barbier and I can sort that out.
Okay. Okay, thank you, chief, any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, the last presentation is the Basis Bridgewater LLC Final PUD, Mr. Gellis?
Good evening. So tonight we have Kim Linghorn here representing Cane's, Raising Cane's Restaurant. I provided the board with my staff report, so I will keep this very brief. Property is located in the Bridgewater Landings Development. It's going to be located next to the Starbucks. They've made every effort to meet and exceed the requirements that were developed during the PUD process. Staff recommends approval of the, so I'm just going to fast forward completely through that presentation, John. Staff's recommending approval with conditions. There are a couple fine details that we're still working out with the applicant, they've made every intention to meet those, and we're, we just want to concrete those within this report and within the trustee's motion to have teeth to what we're saying here tonight, and to make sure that they meet these requirements when they apply for a zoning certificate. The, the conditions are listed.
Could you just read the condition?
I will, I'll read this.
If you could just actually just read your staff recommendation, it's on the record.
Yeah, so staff recommendation is the opinion of the staff that the conditions that were placed on the PUD during the zone change and preliminary PUD process have been addressed in the final PUD plans. It is also the opinion of the staff that the submitted plans generally meet the requirements and guidelines outlined in the Bridgewater Church B PUD Design Guidelines. The applicant has made efforts to address concerns and issues brought to them by the township staff. Staff further believes that the final PUD plan is consistent with sections 615.7 of the Township zoning resolution, and will promote public health, safety, and the general welfare of the residents of Fairfield Township, based on the findings of fact and... Uh, based on the findings of fact, uh, and the submitted proposals to the Fairfield Township Board of Trustees, staff makes the recommendation to approve with conditions the final PUD plan with the incorporation of the following comments, following conditions. So the, uh, condition one is all applicable findings and conditions from case FTZZ 22-2C will, shall remain in effect and are required to be met. Uh, condition number two, the monument sign location must be approved by the zoning administrator prior to the approval of the zoning certificate. Condition number three is upgrade the dumpster enclosure materials to match the primary materials from the building. Uh, condition four, move the dumpster and dumpster enclosure to a location, to the more standard location, as recommended in attachment six on this report. Uh, and condition five, all branding associated with this location shall utilize the proper jurisdiction of Fairfield Township.
I especially like item five. Thank you for including that. We're Fairfield Township, we're not other communities, uh, we're, we're Fairfield Township, so thank you.
You're welcome. And that's all, that's all I have. If you have questions for me?
Questions from the board, from Mr. Goins?
No, no access, do you have the access from Princeton Road?
Correct, yeah, so the access will come off of the newly named Bridgewater Landings Drive, uh, so it will access from the north to the south.
And where will the sign be?
It'll be, uh, up front, uh, in front of the location facing Princeton Road. That was already agreed upon and the...
So that's not really a part of it, it's in the back, in the back of the...
It would be the back of the store, yeah, so it'd be, uh, facing Princeton Road.
I mean, is the store going to look the same in the front and the back? So if you go down Princeton Road, you'll know you're looking at the back?
So there's material requirements, so it's going to make it look nice on all sides, yeah. And the dumpster enclosures are actually going to be, uh, not towards Princeton Road, so on the west side.
They're going to be on the left side or the other?
Yeah.
Are they marked on the drawing?
They're on the page eight.
Oh, I see. On the church side.
So that was, uh, that's the proposed location. We recommended that they move it further north.
The circle was...
Yeah.
Uh, let's see.
Yeah, I have a attachment six. Check out attachment six. It'll be in the next page.
Six?
Oh, maybe it's that.
Maybe it's six.
Oh, maybe it's attachment.
Seven?
All right.
Attachment six, not page six. Oh, so it's not on the, it's now it's not on the east side?
Yeah, and that, and that's where...
So the coffee shop people will be able to see the dumpsters instead.
It's going to be nice materials and it's going to be landscaped around it, but yes, they'll have a good view of it, depending on how they get in.
Yes.
Uh, and that's similar to what the Starbucks general location is.
That one's going to be on that side too?
Yeah, and that's, uh, the issue with the location on the east side of that, um, was kind of discussed with the church and the developer, so that it would be addressing an issue that was brought to our attention. Thank you.
I guess with the applicant, we have a chance to speak. If you were just going to testify, please raise your hand. We saw the testimony about the name of the attorney, the whole jury, nothing but two guilty.
I swear.
All right, if you could state your name for the record.
Hi there, my name is Bill Skiba.
Okay, and would you like to present anything for the board?
Uh, nothing in addition to what Mr. Goins, I just wanted to express gratitude to Mr. Goins for the time and effort that he put into coordinating with us throughout this entire process and to the remainder of the trustees for the time tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions as it relates to the use of the site, um, but Mr. Goins did a fantastic job of setting us up here, so thank you.
Who, who's going to own the property?
So I believe the property is ultimately going to be owned by Cane's, but that is something we can certainly follow up with.
You don't have to show?
It is either going to be Cane's or it's going to be Oreo Development, but my understanding is that it's going to be Cane's. We're working directly for Cane's on this, but there are coordinations, negotiations between the developer and Cane's as it relates to the responsibility and handover of the site.
And how many, how many employees will it, will it have?
That's a great question, sir, and it's certainly something I can follow up with you on. I do not have the answer for you on that right now at this time, I apologize.
You know what the, uh, normal revenue is for a civil like this?
Sir, as a civil engineer for that prop, for this project, that's not something that I would be privy to.
Is there anybody else here with you?
Just me tonight, but I'm happy to forward any questions or comments or concerns that you might have to the remainder of the project team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Do you have a timeframe?
No, no, no real timeframe established, to my knowledge.
No.
So that, after they get approval from, if they get approval from the board, they'll still need to make any changes to the plans and submit to the township for zoning certificate, then go through the permitting process with the county from next year?
Most likely. Yeah, we're still working through all of these processes right now. We're on the cross-site bridge once we, uh, get our approvals.
Well, this is on the agenda later for our approval or not approval. Okay, um, the next item is old business, but there's nothing to discuss, so we'll move on to item three, items for board discussion, and the, the fire chief hiring process. Uh, we need to discuss a timeline and make sure that, um, we have enough time to hire somebody and if we're going to use an outside source and what have you, so open that discussion. And we need to start making some decisions on when we're going to get started. Kind of kicked around the idea a little bit last time, but I think we need to definitely have some direction, that we need the administrator to start advertising and go hard with the fire chief and what we want to do. So I'm happy to listen, because I think you were both involved in hiring a police chief, so what that process was like, and, uh, I have no experience with that. I'd love to have your expertise on that matter and, and set some sort of, um, process in the works.
Well, I think that it makes sense to, um, open the, open the field and to, um, solicit. I don't necessarily know that we need an outside source to do that, because I think this is something that, uh, that we need to look at internally. I'm not opposed to that, but, um, I don't know that it's strictly necessary. Uh, I think it's going to be important that we get someone that can work well with our existing team and, um, that, that can, um, continue moving things forward with the fire department.
Okay. So are you wanting just to have an advertisement in a newspaper, or do you want, is there a way to advertise through, um, the local or the OTA, right?
I would like to get some, I'm not really sure, I don't, I wouldn't know the best practices for that, but perhaps there's some others that we can reach out to that can make some recommendations for what that would look like. Um, I don't necessarily want to put it in the newspaper, but I would, I would think that there's probably some industry publications that would be out there that would miss, that would be, I mean, you, I'm certain you've had experience with this, and there would probably be some ways to reach out to people that I wouldn't necessarily put in the newspaper.
How, how did you find out about this position when you applied?
So this position was posted to the Ohio Fire Chiefs, uh, job board, and, uh, usually it, it's pretty simple. We have the, uh, Ohio Fire Chiefs, which is like $75 to run the ad, and, uh, we can do, uh, group emails to the Southwest District, which is 13 different counties. And once it gets out, it pretty much goes up all over the place pretty easily, so, um, and the cost to put a ad in a newspaper is absolutely crazy, so you're talking thousands of dollars to put an ad in. We can do the same with some emails and one or two, um, well-placed to, uh, in fact, the Fire Chiefs Conference is next week, uh, and I can make contacts with the different directors of the Fire Chiefs who can email it to their groups, so we can get it out without really expending a lot of time or energy and get it out rather quickly, so...
And, and I guess also what I would like to see, if Mrs. Van Der Hoorn might want to do a little bit of research on that and, uh, see what the best process would be as fair and get with Chief Thomas on what that, that would look like.
Yeah, we already have, sorry, I thought that was really well. We already have, and he's given plenty of documents, um, he's suggested a timeline, given me job descriptions, uh, a, a lot of what we've rated on is we don't know, we, we just didn't know direction with salary.
Okay, so salary being the issue, and I think there are some, some steps that we're taking in order to look at that globally for Fairfield Township. Um, the compensation strategy is going to be critical. I think that, uh, we've already had the discussion a little bit tonight on that, but, um, we're in a different market right now, and we have to make sure that we are being competitive. So it does look, it's, we really do need to put some effort into our overall compensation strategy and make sure that we can hire and retain the people that we're interested in hiring and retaining.
And the main, the main thing we need is whether, how, how you, whether it's going to be a salary range or how you want that word, but then also how, do you want it internal, external, and do you want, uh, the, the, have a Fire Chiefs Association to run a process or not? Chief, chief has all the information, all the access, he understands where it needs to be sent and, and whatnot, so I'm not concerned about that. We just need to know what the board expects from us.
Okay, so what, what you need to know operationally is then, is, is what specifically? We need to know we're external or...
I'm sorry, internal, external, you mean hiring from within versus hiring from outside?
Opening to the outside, correct? Right, so that's, so what, yeah, so what are the, what are the key things that you need decisions on? Internal or external? What else?
We would need to know that, we would need to know how you want us to explain salary, whether that's semester with experience or you have a range. We need to know a timeline, when would you like, initially, chief had suggested June to start to advertise, and, um, obviously we'll pass that, which is fine, we have time, but, uh, we need to know when would you like that process to start, and then what is that process going to look like? Do you want us to contract? We met with the Ohio Fire Chiefs Association, a member from there, that they do set up these assessment centers and go through it, and they will test in a way that I don't have knowledge of the technical details and, and the command and...
I definitely like the idea of a testing center. I think that that's a very, and I would assume that this is some sort of a hands-on, um, maybe like a simulation where they would be put into a situation where they would have to make, it's only a little bit long to ask.
The discussion, uh, with the Ohio Fire Chiefs, uh, was that we would open up to accept applications, uh, and then we would do a review of those applications and try to get that down to six or eight.
Okay.
And then learn in the assessment center, and then scoring out of that assessment center and bring the top two, three to the board for interviews.
Okay.
And then with the anticipation that one of those, uh, top candidates would be selected by the board, um, the, uh, the, the two major issues are the timeframe, that you want to hire somebody, and understanding that we also have an open assistant chief's position. And, uh, I know that we talked about hiring as early as January. Um, I would say this, if you're comfortable with doing January, and then in January, once the new chief is here running a assistant chief process, uh, in January, February, so that we would be looking at being able to fill that staff position, preferably before I leave in April, uh, that would probably help the new chief immensely to have a person in place. And I think if we can identify that person, even if they don't start, uh, for example, you hire them in January and they don't want to start until February or middle of March or something, if you identify that person, they can become part of that process, uh, and then we could move forward with, uh, having an assistant chief in place, hopefully early in April, if not before then. There have been, uh, internal and external candidates that have already reached out to talk to me.
Sure.
Um, and I believe that we will see a, uh, a lot of, uh, interest. Uh, the number one question we're being asked is the dollars and cents issue, and, um, there's a lot of, uh, candidates, uh, that are out there looking for fire chiefs' jobs, um, but when you look at salaries and knowing that captains and some lieutenants, depending on what departments, are making more than our fire chief and police chief make, that's going to limit the quality of the candidates that I would expect to, to apply and be willing to accept the job. I think the worst thing we can do is run a process, identify a top-tier candidate, and we can't meet salary to, to get that person in, you know, I don't want to be settling for second or third best if we don't have to, so I think that's something that, that we really have to be aware of, and, you know, we can do, uh, advertisement with eligible salary, that's not going to draw top-tier candidates. If you don't know what you're going to pay, that may limit, uh, some of those top-tier candidates from applying, because just about every ad has a salary.
Sure.
So, so, um, if we advertise outside, that doesn't exclude anybody inside.
Right.
I understand there's an attitude about that, but to me, we should go out.
I think it should be an open process, because there are candidates inside that have interest, and maybe those candidates, although they may not be the chief, might be candidates eventually for the assistant chiefs.
Might be the chief, you know. They, they can see the process, score on the assessment, to be in those top couple of people.
If they're connected, the top of the list, then we should definitely be looking at them.
I would say we start off with a $75 ad on the police chief's page and have the email sent out. Now, I, I would really like to see the stack of information you've already accumulated, um, and I know later tonight we're going to talk more about salaries.
Right.
Uh, I read in the paper, I'm sure everybody did, Lebanon, which is a very similar situation to us, although they're a city, two stations, et cetera, et cetera, they just hired a new fire chief, and they had 21 applicants, which sounds like a pretty decent pool to draw from. Um, I don't know what they're paying, you know, that type of thing, what they agreed on, but that would be, if we get 20, that would be great. More is better, but...
Well, more is not always good, because it's, it'd be very difficult to do that. Uh, the recommendation from the chief was to narrow it down to six, possibly eight.
First we talk to?
Yes.
Okay.
And first they do that for ordering.
Yeah, and what we did, right, and what we did with the police chief is, uh, we did that, and each trustee selected certain people, and we scored it and interviewed. Took us a long time to make a decision, um, but we did make a decision.
And I guess I would like to see, so say, for example, if we were to get 21 applicants, I would like to see those applications before it does get narrowed down to the other one too.
So that would take place in concert with the board.
Okay, good.
That is not the fire chief's job.
Okay, good.
Uh, they will run the assessment center, and the assessment center will be based on the things that we discussed about the job and the issues that face Fairfield Township today, 10 years down the road, so that when you do evaluate the candidate, you're evaluating them based on what you want that candidate to perform at. So public ed, public relations, budgeting, incident command, community relations, all of those things come to the table and you identify what's important to the township.
Thirty days, how long do we give them to apply? Thirty, 45 days, you're sitting here, we say, uh...
60 days.
Okay.
I would, I would recommend at least 60 days. Um, most people that are job looking have an application ready to go, and they'll send a resume rather quickly, so...
So middle of September, could we put a deadline of our trustee meeting in September?
Well, that or, we'll probably, um, we'll probably have to have some extra meetings to get through that process.
I think you, you can close it at the end of August, the last day of August.
August 31st.
Six weeks. And it's going to take us a week to get the ad out, so five or six weeks.
The ad's right there, it's ready to go.
I haven't seen it, so...
You guys can, you can make copies of it, you can review it, uh, and get back to the administrator, and if we need to make changes, we can certainly make changes.
Can you all get a copy of this package at some point too?
Okay, so August 31st... Okay, so August 31st deadline.
And that's not sixty days, that's fifty days, right?
Yeah, I think that's still a sufficient amount of time.
That's seven weeks.
From today, yes.
I mean, we could have it out by the end of the week if you approve the job posting. I can have it posted by the end of the week.
Okay, and then it's August 31st, give or take a day or two.
And then September review, and the board can review all the applicants, and if you want to...
I'm sorry, September 1st, that's the Friday, four o'clock on September 1st.
And that'll give us a little bit of time before trustee meeting, so that we can look at things on our own.
It's Labor Day weekend, but, you know, we still have, at that point, we have a good 10 days for the meeting. And then again, something this important, we're going to meet more often until we...
Sounds great.
Get down to it.
In that application, there are things that are mandatory, and as those applicants come through, the administrator can check more of those. If they don't meet the minimums, then they'll just go out of the pile, and we'll deal with the ones that are qualified.
So as soon as we can get Administrator Von der Hoorn our range, and we look at this and approve the language of the application, we're okay for her to send it out to the Fire Chiefs Association, right? And that will get the clock started for people to apply. So has legal looked at this advertisement to see if it's...
I have not submitted it to the law director, primarily because if you don't approve it, there's no point in me sending it to him. It's made up of other ones, so I don't think that there's any legal challenges. It's very...
So maybe once we've gotten it together, Mr. Barbiere can take a look at that, make sure that it's...
I'd rather Katie look at it.
My mother-in-law, the law director, look at it, not the Assistant Attorney.
You probably have a sample of a job description anyway, don't you?
Yeah, we've done them. I mean, I've approved many advertisements for both police and the fire, and I've approved many job descriptions, so I'm sure it's fine.
I'm comfortable with whatever legal comes up with, just approving that, so we can get the process started. Now, we just need to get a dollar figure what our range is, then we can start with the board.
Yeah, if we can cut it off on the first of September, and maybe by our meeting night, we could, I don't know, that'd be pretty tight if we all want to see the applications.
So by the meeting night, you're talking about wanting to, say, send these to the assessment or don't send...
Well, at least have a spot the conversation about it, and maybe we have to meet the next week to narrow it down to six or eight, something like that.
Okay.
So then we could do the assessment in October. How much time was how we said go to take to get the assessment done?
They would be working on it immediately, and usually they like six months, but we've had a preliminary meeting, so they have a pretty good idea what we're going to do already. I don't think there'd be a problem with trying to get it done by November.
Then we interview in November.
After that, we interview.
And we make multiple interviews. Multiple interviews during the month.
And when we're down to the minimum, then we put the police work to do the criminal background.
So truly, in our, by our December meeting, we should have a good idea who our finalists are, so that we're hiring in January. Is that about right?
Sounds right to me, yeah.
Okay.
Effective February 1st or February 15th, either way, based on whatever time they would need to leave where they're at.
Well, I think we're notifying in January who we're hiring, but they're not actually starting until...
March 1st?
Because it's March 1st, because you're leaving April 1st.
April 1st is my last one.
So you want 30 days, but...
He didn't want more than 30 days, about November 1st.
So early, so yeah, if you let them know in January, they're getting...
They're trying to hire an Assistant Chief, then hiring a member of your...
Right. Or he can start that process. Okay. All right, so you have good direction?
Thank you, yes.
You're just waiting for us to give you a dollar-figure range, and then we're going to roll with it?
Yes.
Perfect.
Typed it all out to Chief, so we're on the same page.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the strategic plan, the community survey. We were going to look at some things, submit some questions, maybe to Administrator Von der Hoorn. Are we, where are we in that?
I was giving some thought to that, and I think that what we need to do, if we do the survey at all, is to keep it very high level and very simple, okay? I don't think it should be granular, like how do you feel about specific department things, but I would keep it more high level. What do you think, high level, what's like, what are the top three things that we could do in Fairfield Township to make this a better community? How do you see, it's just more of a high-level, open-ended type of question, because I don't know that, I think people care, but I would like to keep it more high level. So they might not care about a slide at the playground, okay, but they might care about a splash pad at the playground. We all know everyone wants steakhouse. That's been heard, I think, enough times by all of us. But I'd like to keep it more of a high level, maybe one or two questions, something like that, just high level. And then we can kind of look for trends on the data and big-picture things to run together. And then at some point, too, we could possibly look at scheduling some feedback sessions or just open discussion sessions where people can talk about, but I would not make this a long survey. I would not make this, do you think Fairfield Township should be a full-time or part-time fire department? But I do think it should be sort of a high-level kind of thing, and that would give us more of a direction about what people are thinking in broader traps.
Okay. Trustee McAvoy?
I would disagree with that. I would still put another box on there, you know, or an example box, so if they said they wanted more community involvement, or then I would ask them to be example of that.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Splash pad, or I talk to people, and there are a lot of old people in the Township that like to have a place to go on Tuesdays and Thursdays to play cards, something like that. Because they're sort of, you know, part-time, maybe at this room, I don't know, but if you had, you had that box on there and said, give me an example.
Yeah, I think we're saying the same thing, because that's, I don't want to say, do you want a splash pad, do you want a steakhouse? I just want to say, what are some things that you would like to see, and leave it just an open discussion box where people can type things in.
So I did send Administrator Von der Hoorn some survey questions. I thought I did a month ago, but I didn't attach it to document. So, but I'm going to give you copies of what I submitted. You can look at them, and then come up with some of your own suggestions on what kind of survey, and then maybe next month we can come back and say, here's how many questions we want, this is how we want it sent out, if we just want it on our website, saying, hey, take this survey, or throw it out on social media or whatever, like, hey, here's a link to this survey. So, and then, Ms. Schultz, here's a copy for the record, so you can include it in minutes. Again, we don't need to discuss these questions right now, I just wanted you to have a copy to see what I submitted. One of them did ask what kind of restaurant, but you've already addressed that.
We don't know.
We don't know what people are saying, but maybe people that are not out there telling Facebook that they want a restaurant might want something different. So, and but...
We're not going to provide that.
No, we're not.
You know, that's the bad part about asking this question.
Right.
If they say they want it.
Right.
I can't make us, I can't force a steakhouse to come here, so everyone can say, and that's not what we're in the business of doing.
Right, I agree.
So...
Like we should be, but there could be some marketing things that we could do to attract those type of businesses, you know? There's some things we could do. So I just wanted you to have it, just so you can look over it and then pick it apart, and then also come up with some questions that you would like to, and I like your idea of high level.
I like high level, I like one high-level question.
This is my first stab at it, and look it over, see what you think. Let's approach, next meeting, be prepared with some questions that we want, even if it's just one. You pick one, you pick one, I pick one, we have three questions in there out there, and that's fine.
What's the number-one issue to you at the township? What's the number-one issue, a little bad in the township?
Right.
And that's a good open-ended question. I like that. And then it could be, what do you think would help Fairfield Township? And that could be another open-ended. So I just, I like it, open-ended, number-one issue, I like that one. Ideas for improvement is sort of the general theme for another question.
Okay.
And then maybe another one, high level.
You could always follow up with, for dinner tonight, do you want steak?
Three.
Or a steak?
Yeah, or was it steak?
Okay, that good? Okay, with that being said, we'll move on to communication. This portion, this is the portion of the meeting where you, the residents of Fairfield Township, are invited to share your thoughts with the board. Please know that this time has been set aside from the board to listen to you. Your comments are valued and will be taken into careful consideration. The board will not engage in dialogue at this time, and presentations are limited to three minutes each, please. The first person to sign up is Debbie Wurk.
Yes.
Okay. And just state your name for the record and address for the record.
My name's Debbie Wurk, and I live in Fairfield Township, 11926 Park Mill. We've got a situation up on the hill there that is not good, and you're going to see pictures soon where it gets real extensive, how bad it's getting. We have traffic issues, we have garbage issues, we have folks up there using our mailing addresses. Example, I got these in my mailbox just the other day. They're from the BMT, address changes. Those people do not live at my house, just me and my husband.
And Chief Shabali, I think that would be an illegal activity, wouldn't it, that we could follow up with?
They're sleeping out on the street. I have had Officer McCroskey check into the same people that's on that car, and got legal license, legal tags, legal driver's license, but they're looking for a change of address, so they use my address. That's a problem, plus the fact that they're sleeping on the streets, in their car, and we have to sit and listen to these cars turn on and off all night with the air conditioner running. And it's, the speeding, we have not one speed limit sign on our street, not one, Park Mill What can we do to remedy that?
You say you spoke...
Somebody's ducts loose.
You said you spoke to Sergeant McCroskey?
Yes.
Okay, I'll have him call you tomorrow to follow up. And you said that you have folks sleeping cars outside, is that right in front of your house? Is that 1926?
My address is 1926, but it's like across the street, 1925.
Okay. I'll have him call you tomorrow to follow up.
Thank you.
I need your...
If I can get your information.
Yeah, we can.
Not a worry. Okay, thank you, thank you. I need that. I will.
I would like to say that I did contact the BMT today, and we have a, we're going to do a federal investigation on the situation also from that one.
Can I keep this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Okay, the next person to sign up is Andy, I'm sorry, is that McMullen?
Yes.
Okay. Just state your name and the address for the record.
I am Andrew McMullen, I live at 1916 Park Mill Avenue. I've lived there for 17 years, and you've definitely watched it go downhill. The property at Bieglub's, the old market, 1900, has old cars parked in the parking lot, weeds growing around it, they've not been moved in years. Emily's 1925, 1925 Park Mill is a big eyesight, I have some pictures if you look up around. And she has a vicious dog. I'm probably more concerned about the dog than I am the company she keeps. The dogs have bit several dogs, several people, and killed dogs. I've seen the dog walk over there, I couldn't tell you how many times, and the dog always gets to stay. I don't understand why that dog is not removed. I'm really confused. I don't know who to turn to or where to go. Do we have a chronic nuisance law for Fairfield Township? I know Hamilton City does, I believe Fairfield City does, but I don't know about Fairfield Township. As you can see from the pictures, her house is a hot mess, and she's only been there since May 19th, May 18th. Her dog left her, because she moved next door to clean up crew that was cleaning out her old house. Her dog left the yard, the new home next door, went next door and attacked one of the workers that was cleaning out her old home. I just, I don't know.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll have someone from the administration or zoning department follow up with you about that nuisance.
Great.
See what we can do to remediate the problem.
Okay.
And I know our zoning department is pretty good following up with complaints and making sure that things are taken care of, and if not, we come back with this board.
Okay. Now, I believe she rents, I don't know the landlord's full name, but he, Debbie does, but he seems to come in and help her, and he doesn't really seem to tell her to clean anything up or do anything.
Okay. Well, we do appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and we'll make sure we follow up with you. And then I also have your phone number here as well, so that as you're going, you can contact me.
Yes, thank you for your time.
When did you take these pictures?
The last four of just the property that Emily resides in was taken on June 28th. All the others I just took last night, sitting on my porch. I wanted the most recent I could get.
We can take these?
Absolutely, I can make more.
Can we take a look at the entire speed limit sign over there in that neighborhood and see if we need to add any, just not there, but across the whole area? Howard, do you text it, some check digital... Yeah, I'd like to, not just Park Mill, but everywhere else over there, I'd really like to get some signs posted over there. Absolutely.
Hey, that was all that signed up. Is there somebody that we missed? Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. TID, Trustee McAvoy?
The TID meeting yesterday was canceled for lack of business. Of course, the main issues haven't changed. We have a meeting later this month. What's the date on that North Hamilton Crossing? Still scheduled for July, something like that?
Twenty-seven. I have it in my calendar.
So if we could get that put up on the front of the webpage.
Twenty-six. Twenty-six.
Just to remind people, give them the time and the location, that'd be great. And we are, you know, again, scheduled for early August, but...
And that was still at the engineer's office at 5:30?
No.
No?
Because Miami Hamilton.
University Boulevard.
Okay, great. Any questions for Trustee McAvoy? Okay, other committees, Trustee Alkemeyer?
On the EMA...
On the EMA, Matt Havercross has resigned to pursue other business interests. Jim Bowen has been voted by the EMA board to take his place. There will be a farewell party for Mr. Havercross on Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00. If anyone would like to attend.
And located where?
At the Linecon Building.
Okay.
Okay, on OKI, the freight conference is coming up September 5th through the 7th. If you'd like to attend that, go to OKI.org. The strategic regional planning process was voted on and put into effect. They will be shooting a video in the next few weeks to put out in conjunction with that plan. As I've mentioned on prior occasions, that's going to be a great resource for zoning and for planning. It's, it took a look at, there were many multiple organizations that participated in that to put together this overall plan. And I think it's going to be a valuable resource for Fairfield Township and pretty much everyone across the region in order to use. The beauty of it is, is that there's high-level recommendations in that, but it can be customized to what works for us best here in Fairfield Township. So OKI is not by any stretch saying, hey Fairfield Township, you need to do this. Because, you know, other people think that you should do it, but it can be customized to fit what we think is best within Fairfield Township. So that will be coming, the video will be coming out. There is still some funding available for electric vehicles. There's going to be another round available in the fall of electric vehicle funding. And this is for charging stations for electric vehicles. Metro Parks had expressed some interest in that, so I reached out to them and gave them the contact information on that. But that is available. Concerning the Brent Spence Bridge, OKI did vote on that. Because anything that does, any project that has federal dollars has to have OKI process approvals. So the board did vote on the funding for the Brent Spence Bridge. It is going to be a design build, and I think the cost they're looking at right now, I believe, is 3.54 billion with a B dollars for that. So this is actually going to be one of the largest cumulative amount of money that OKI has really ever put through. So kind of a big deal. Let's see, those are the highlights for OKI.
Great, anything for class?
Absolutely, we had that meeting yesterday. Couple of key updates for that, the legislative updates that pertain to us. Many things came up, but I will cover the ones that relate more to Fairfield Township. They did talk about the budget a little bit, the budget that it was passed when they first put it out, there were over 900 points of contention. That was after a significant discussion dropped down to about 400, and then it ended up passing on Friday. One of the things that will be heading our way is that there is a fraud training and reporting project that will be out there. And Mrs. Schultz, I would assume that you'll be leading the way on this. But we will all have to be watching a video, which is, I believe, five to 10 minutes in length. And then we have to say that we watched the video, and this will be pertaining to fraud training and reporting. Trustees, fiscal officer, and anyone with fiduciary responsibility will have to be watching this video. And it will be something that's on an audit. So we need to make sure that we are all doing this so that we do not get a black mark on the audit. We will have to watch this video this year. The local government fund did experience some cuts in the budget, so that we can expect that coming down the road. The motor vehicle use tax, now this one kind of did get a little bit in the weeds. But there were some changes in the motor vehicle use data. This doesn't really pertain to us too much, but you can use it to build buildings. You cannot use that money to purchase buildings. So that was, it's not really so much with us, but that was something to kind of be aware of. There is a subcommittee which is doing a property tax study. Their due date is going to be December 31st of 2024. So it will be after the next General Assembly, so that's happening. This does relate to us, and this is also in your OTA magazine. But the competitive bid increase has gone up to $75,000. And that will be going up by 3% each year. So they've kind of had that in light of the cost increases that we know we have experienced. There was some changes with the TIF funding. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not going to get into this. If it does come up, I will let our law directors handle this. But there are some issues with TIF funding and TIFs being moved. A TIF, a property being moved from one TIF to another TIF. I'm going to just defer to you, and it's not really certain and irrelevant to us right now, it could be in the future. But I'm going to assume that your department has got this noted.
We do have it noted, yes.
Okay.
It's making the things a little more flexible, but it doesn't affect us right now.
Yes. Okay, and let's see, Senate Bill 63, which was allowing the age for police, we talked about that. I think that did not go through. So, and we've talked about that before too. Not that we would have to hire someone 18, but anyhow, that was out there. And that is about it for class.
Any questions for Ms. Alkemeyer? Okay, thank you for those reports, keeping us up to date. The next item is fiscal office, yes, sorry. Take a break. Sure. It is 9:13, we'll adjourn, or we'll pause for about five minutes, come back at 9:18. Thank you.
Go into, you never.
You got a reservation there? Okay, I was just going to say, I just threw it for sick law, I was looking it up. You do that by motion.
Do you have the article that went out that said how long has been this for? Because the resolution said it was given to the newspaper, what day?
Yeah, I don't have that, they didn't even tell me that notice.
They didn't, okay. I know that it's somewhere. From D I. I sent it around 6/6.
You want me to say who you like? Yeah, I guess.
She did that, so.
You're a genius that you got that. I should have caught it earlier, but I didn't. I didn't get that one five. I just assumed it was on there and I shouldn't have assumed.
I know, and I.
Oh my gosh, she asked, she let, well, yeah, before, when there were all kinds of people at work, but. Shall we? Come back.
It's ready to make a motion, remember the agenda. 23106. It'll be a good ask, thank you.
Okay, it's 9:19, and we are back, and better than ever. And at this time, I need to make a motion to amend the agenda. We need to add Resolution 23-106, which would be approving the tax budget that was presented this evening. And that will be added later on in the agenda. And Fiscal Officer Schultz is getting copies of us right now. So I do move to amend the agenda to add that resolution. Any questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Schultz, I made a motion to amend the agenda. And then Mr. McAbey seconded it. So if you could call a roll, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
Trustee Alkemeyer?
That motion to add this resolution is passed, and we'll have this as our last resolution of the evening. Okay, so let's get back to the agenda, and we'll move on to fiscal officers' recommendations and reports.
Okay.
I wanted to report that we got a opioid settlement of $4,793, or $39. Also, we're in medical insurance open enrollment, which is effective 8/1, so we're working through that. And the last thing I wanted to mention, in case you guys heard it, is I did accept a position with Metro Parks of Butler County. And I've checked with Mr. Barbier, and there should be no conflict of interest, but if there were, we will work through it. So if you hear about it, just wanted to let you know ahead of time. That's all I have.
Any questions for Ms. Schultz?
Yes, sir.
We got paid for our land sale?
Yes, we did. It's, the money is sitting in the CIC bank account. So we'll have a resolution on the next CIC meeting to transfer that money to the general fund, if that's what you choose.
And that's from the library buying the property?
Yes.
And it went to the CIC?
Yes, it did.
But the library doesn't have a timeframe right now when they're going to start construction. But we do know their intent is to put a library on that corner by the hospital and by, and by Story Point. Yeah.
And by the new elementary.
The property owned by the school system.
They own the property, right?
And the property, yes.
And they're not in the process or in the habit of buying land and not.
Correct, they're developed.
Square corner development.
They're developed, they are, they are coming up with a master plan of what they want to do with the schools.
Right. And what was that number, 700 and?
Uh, I think it's.
I think it was 600 and something thousand, but I could get that for you.
That's okay.
Yeah, it was high, high 600s, 680 something, I think.
Yes. Well, I have it right here. It was $685,181.75.
That was the closest without going over.
Set it around. How much land does that leave, leave us over there?
Sorry, don't know that one. It's three to five acres, and pretty wet.
So the sign that said, we could still leave it there, we just need to adjust the amount of acres.
We do.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the miss.
To suspend the reading of the minutes?
For the June 1st, 2023. My second. Ms. Schultz, we call a roll.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Alkemeyer?
Yes.
That motion passes. Second. May I have the vote, please?
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Alkemeyer?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Second. Ms. Schultz, we call a roll, please.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Alkemeyer?
Yes.
And that motion is adopted. Ms. Fonda Hart, we have the administrative reports.
Thank you. There are several resolutions coming up on this for the salt contract. Morton was the winner of the contract, and roughly $90. I know for you, I think 9063 maybe. So that will be coming up. We need to send a resolution to the county for that. Seward Road Bond, everything is proceeding. We've been having weekly meetings, and that, that's the whole big crew, including Nyer Township. And they're possibly closing on August 9th on that bond. So I will report back once I know definites.
Any idea what the list is?
I think they went six, but I got to find that out. I think when, when we looked at all the numbers, the township will net about 3 million. After paying back the developer, and to me, it's a pretty complicated deal, as you know, but. Outside of that, Chief let me know, Chief Thomas, that there are about 20 hydrants left to be painted. And then his, well, not volunteers, his seasonal employees will then work the fair. And you said that the hydrant should be done by the end of the week or month? End of the week. So mission has been accomplished over two summers. And outside of that, we are. And outside of that, we are working on the car show and concert for September ninth. Have a lot in place there. Um, should be a very fun event, first of its kind here. So more to come on that. Uh, we have a committee. I don't think there's anything else right now. Do you have any questions for me?
I don't have any. I usually call you if I have questions. But, but, any questions?
I appreciate the email update on those items and, um, you know, more often.
Okay.
That would be great.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, we move into, uh, motions. Is there a motion to accept the resignation of the firefighter paramedic, Christopher Simpson? Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier? Trustee Burden?
Yes, that motion passes. I move to authorize the administrator to sign a blend and extend aggregation agreement with E, I'm sorry, AEP Energy at the price lower than point eight-three-nine cents per cubic foot. Is there a second? Any questions or comments?
That was the other, I thought, which one more? Um, so that is what I brought down at the administrator's report. Which, uh, reached out to me as they're heading into the second half of twenty twenty-three. Their, the natural gas prices are shaping up better. They believe that it's going to drop. They're hoping that it'll be competitive enough. We were at this thirty-seven cents in our last contract. Right now, we're at eighty-six and they're hoping that they'll be able to blend down into, hoping sixty. So we, what, what they basically asked was that I be authorized to sign in the event that they could blend it down, that it makes sense. So, yeah, if, if the blend isn't gonna lower the price significantly, they're not going to come back asking me to sign, but they anticipate at least a twenty cent reduction.
Let me clarify, I read the number wrong. The number is printed correctly. It's eighty-three point nine cents. I said point eight-three-nine cents, so I apologize. It's written correctly in the motion, but it's eighty-three point nine-nine, point eight-three-nine.
And Shannon, you meant to second it, right?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize for that.
Well, my, my copy says point eight-three-nine.
But it says, there's a dollar sign in front of it. Yeah. Dollar sign. Okay, so we have a first and a second to approve at eighty-three point nine cents or less.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
And that motion.
Whole lot higher than what we've been paying.
Yes.
So anybody watching and listening, you know, shop it yourself or take our rate, it's gonna be expensive then.
Right. That motion passes. Next motion?
Motion to approve the proposed final FEV, FTZ-C twenty-three dash two C.
I second.
Do you want a motion to approve with the conditions? Motion, actually. Okay.
Doesn't say that over here.
Well, it does say it in the, it does say motion to approve, deny or approve with conditions. It does say that on the...
Oh, with conditions. Yes, it does.
Okay, so your motion is to approve with conditions.
My motion is to approve with...
With conditions. Listed by staff. Conditions listed by staff. And I second that motion.
Ready? Trustee McAbey?
And we, and we did, this is where we discussed it, right? And, and we did find out that Keynes is gonna own the property. Yeah. So he found that out since, since we talked earlier. Thanks for doing that.
Okay, come on, roll.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
So that, that puts Keynes, the coffee shop, and the auto spot on those three lots across from Casey's. And then there's several more in the back.
Okay, we had a resignation for a firefighter. Do we need to move, make a motion to apply someone to fill out a position? Do we need to do that? To advertise the fill-out position?
No, it's a, it's an authorized position already, so we don't have to...
We just need a motion to authorize us to make a job offer to hire somebody at the next meeting.
Okay.
From within our staff.
So we just need to hire somebody at the next meeting. It's an authorized spot. We don't have to vote again to reauthorize another.
Yes, the, his resignation isn't effective until like the twenty-fourth of July, so we weren't gonna try and hire somebody now when the spot's not vacant, but just authorize us to make a job offer.
Okay. What's an upposition? Do you have authority to offer someone a job? Let me know when we approve it, but you have the authority to offer them the job. Okay, can we have the first, first resolution, please?
Resolution number twenty-three-one-hundred, approving open purchase order balances. Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, we call the roll.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes. And that resolution is adopted. Next resolution, please.
Resolution twenty-three-one-zero-one, authorizing a in-and-out purchase order for Ohio Association of Chiefs of Police at a price not to exceed five thousand nine hundred dollars.
Second. Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. We have the next resolution, please.
Resolution twenty-three-one-zero-two. So resolution authorizing the creation of an academy payment or reimbursement program for the police department with a maximum payment or reimbursement not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
And this, uh, resolution is a first read, but we do have the option to approve it tonight. So I move to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash one oh two. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
It's a lot of money. I trust as usual, you will be responsible with that and, and we'll use that to hire and retain the people that we need to.
As usual, yes. Trustee McAbey?
Well, I was just reading the whole resolution there. Just, you know, it says not to exceed ten thousand. That's just the payment for the academy.
Right.
And, and up until now, we have never paid anybody to, you know, salary. We've never done that.
Have we paid salary to do, um, professional development in the police department, extra training? Like they had to go get certified with certain firearm or? We have, yes.
Not that they're a certified firearm officer.
Correct, that's the difference.
We've, we've hired them as a, they could, they were straight ready.
Right, but I mean, that's part of, like, they're still earning their hourly wage while they're in that professional development.
Paying for that, right.
Correct.
And that's true. It's probably all of our...
Right. Okay.
But it's clear, it, it, you know, the resolution itself goes through and talks about that step one, hourly pay, and asks for a three-year employment commitment.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted. May I, can we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-three-one-zero-three, authorizing a in-and-out purchase order for Special Team Truck Repair Incorporated for the fire department at a price not to exceed nineteen thousand six hundred twenty dollars.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash one oh three.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
And, um, one of the last emails said they were putting it back together. There was still something needed to be done or were you using used parts or something?
They're waiting on a couple of minor parts to complete the repair. They anticipated receiving those yesterday or today and they did not, uh, receive them yesterday. I'm hoping for that truck to be back by the end of the week.
Is that in addition to the nineteen thousand six hundred twenty?
No, that's the entire cost.
Any other questions or comments? And Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted. Can we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-three-one-zero-four, authorizing the administrator to execute a salt contract with the other county engineer's office for the twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four snow and ice control season. And again, Morton did win the bid at ninety dollars and thirty-one cents per ton for a dump.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Higher or lower than last year, do we know?
It's higher.
How much higher?
I have to look that up. I feel like last year was eighty-seven.
Any other questions? Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes, and that resolution is adopted. Maybe we have the final, or the next resolution, please.
Resolution twenty-three-one-zero-five, declaring nuisance and ordering abatement on the properties listed below and further authorizing the zoning administrator to initiate complaint. Properties include fourteen ninety-six Exeter Avenue for high grass and operable vehicles, sixty-two sixty-nine Movena Drive for junk, twenty thirty-four Tulley Road for high grass, nineteen forty-five Peter Avenue for high grass, and sixty-five thirty-two Christine Drive for high grass.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Golds, can you just, uh, just briefly state, there's a few people, few residents in the audience that have interest in one of these properties. Could you explain what the next steps are for this property, these property owners?
Sure. So, uh, the property of interest is the Dean of Drive property. Um, so with that, we'll post a final notice of violation on the property tomorrow. Uh, the, uh, the property owner has ten days to address the nuisance. If they don't address the nuisance, we can move to contract a company to clean up the junk off the property.
And then we would assess?
And then we will, we will send them, we'll send them a bill. Sometimes we get payment that way. And then if we don't get a payment, we'll assess the property taxes.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you for the clarification. Okay, so we have a first, a second. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted. And we have the final resolution, please.
Resolute, Resolution twenty-three-one-zero-six, adopting the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four tax budget attached here to and made a part of this resolution by reference.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes. And that resolution is adopted. We have, uh, let's see. Some announcements, the Fairfield Township Blood Drive is Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, from twelve to four P M. Fairfield Township Board of Trustees meeting is next on Tuesday, August eighth, at seven P M. And the Tetcha Truck Event is, uh, Saturday, August nineteenth, from ten A M. to one P M. at Bridgewater Falls. Uh, board member comments? Trustee McAbey?
Um, just remind everybody that the voting started today for the August special election. Really the required votes to amend the constitution and, uh, if you'd like to register, but you need to get out and vote.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Really excited about the library coming to Fairfield Township. That's a definite win for our community and I think that's gonna be a resource that, uh, that will further enhance Fairfield Township, as well as the Canes. Good stuff.
Definitely. And again, I want to thank, uh, all of our, uh, community volunteers with the Veterans Committee and all the work they did on the memorial. It's an amazing thing. Uh, my sister and her family are in from San Diego and, uh, we took her to see the memorial and her family and, uh, she's just, just amazed by it. She's never seen anything like it, so, um, it's a great job by, by them. Okay, uh, the next thing, uh, O R C one twenty-one point twenty-two G one. Uh, we need to recess into executive session to consider the employment or compensation of a public employee or official. Is there a motion to convene executive session?
Still moved.
Second.
Uh, we, there could, there may or may not be, uh, action to follow executive session. Can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes, and that, uh, motion is, is passed and we go to executive session at nine forty-two P M. Yes. Thank you all very much.